Hammond City Council agenda. Public hearing, call to order please, roll call.
Johnny Blunt.
Here.
Jason Hood.
Here.
Bobby Martin.
Here.
Lamar Marshall.
Here.
Mike Williams.
Here.
Public hearing, you can follow your agenda on the vehicles there. Further, obtain that vehicles may be transferred to Southeastern Louisiana University for their use under the mutual aid agreement between Southeastern Louisiana University Police Department. Mayor Foster.
Thank you very much. If you look back on the final adoption of ordinance in your book, there's actually a copy of the mutual aid agreement between the city of Hammond and the Southeastern Louisiana University Police Department. From time to time, we do have surplus vehicles. As you may recall, the city council did acquire 10 new vehicles, 10 new city police vehicles. We will be rolling out some of those vehicles and we have been contacted by Southeastern Louisiana University that if we have any surplus units that might be in good condition, then they are asking for consideration that they be transferred for their use under the mutual aid agreement. We do have three vehicles and they're listed here in the ordinance statement that we believe are of good quality that we could transfer to Southeastern and it would help our Hammond Police Department to meet their goals and objectives as well. So I ask favorable consideration of the council in allowing us to transfer these three, to declare these three vehicles surplus and to transfer them to Southeastern Louisiana University under the mutual aid agreement.
Questions? Any questions from the audience? Seeing none, we shall now go into our regular session. Roll call.
Johnny Blunt.
Here.
Jason Hood.
Here.
Bobby Martin.
Here.
Lamar Marshall.
Here.
Mike Williams.
Okay. Mr. Big with your lesson.
I invite all of you to bow your heads for a moment as we take this time to contemplate on the reasons for the season of God during this time of year when we once again recount and remember and draw inspiration from the coming of your Son Jesus on this earth. We ask that you give us the heart and the mind and the hands to reach out to those that's fortunate than ourselves and to help them especially during this holiday season. We thank you for the gift of your Son and for this season which is marked by happiness and joy, the gathering of family and friends. We ask that you bless everyone in our great community. We thank you for this community, our heaven, our city. We thank you for the good things that we enjoy in this community. We thank you for the service of our mayor, Lacy Foster, who has served the city so well for the past 12 years. We ask that you continue to give him blessings as he pursues new interest in his very busy life. We thank you to the council and to serve the city. And for all those who are the sisters, the EMTs, the police department, those who fix our pipes and those who keep our city running. We thank you for the privilege of living in a great community such as this filled with good men and women such as those of Central here. And we pray finally and thanksgiving to this great nation of ours and we ask that you keep the men and women who defend our freedoms close to you, protect them, bring them home to their families and to happiness in this land of ours. We pray for all these things in the name of the one who saves us, Jesus Christ, amen.
Our third reason will be done by the fine sisters. Come on.
(Inaudible)
Good job.
Well, he saved the best for last. Y'all the best crew of the whole year.
Okay. Counsel report. Well, what we're going to do now is going to make a presentation and our presentation be to our honorable Mayor, Mayor Foster. Yes, sir. What, Mayor? On behalf of the rich citizens of the city of Hammond and all of those who live around the area who does business with the city of Hammond, they give us, the council, a great joy to give you a token of love. A love that more than just 12 years old. It goes beyond that. So will you please just accept this and put it in a special place so when you think about the city of Hammond, you'll think about this great moment. I understand. Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you.
Mr. President, I also have a little presentation. Again, as a custom, what we like to do is honor the council president, also as an outward one, council president, please accept this plaque from the rest of the council on our behalf and thank you for serving and leading us the way you did. You carry yourself a very kind, great weight. I'm very proud to have served with you on the councils.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We don't need a flag. We don't need a picture. And one more. Mayor and the rest of the council, as tradition that we started several years ago, we hope that it'll continue after we're done, that we will, the council and the mayor that served at this, for this term, we put a little picture collage together. We need to work very hard to get this ready in time. So Mayor, we'll hang this in the council chambers and that is set for years to come.
All right. Thank you. Now with you, are you gonna hang this?
Yes, I am. Right by myself.
Mr. President, one more seat. Call up in the moment.
I also want to thank Dr. Louise Foster for his great jar of...
Red plum juice.
Thank you. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Yes. All right. Okay. I want to mention about the holiday toasts that the Hammond City Council along with the African-American Heritage Museum and Veteran Archives will be having for the mayor on Thursday, the 18th at 6:30 PM at the museum. The museum, it would be free of charge for the family and we encourage you all to come and share that moment with us. After we go through the museum, we will go over to the center and just have a little fellowship and after that, we will be heading home. So hopefully, we will see many of you, your family, to come and enjoy that moment with us. Mayor?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. We do have several things that we'd like to bring forth to the council and to the public. First of all, is the airport tower ribbon cutting tomorrow at 2 o'clock. We hope all of the council members can be there. Took us one year from the groundbreaking, which the groundbreaking, I believe, was on November 13th or thereabouts. And so one year later, we're ready to move into the airport tower. This is going to mean a tremendous boost to the economy of this city and we're excited that we're going to be able to do it in this calendar year. Also, we did receive a little bit of a Christmas present. We received a sales tax collection, an additional sales tax collection of $72,133. We'll be incorporating that into the numbers that have already been reported to the council. This was from a distribution from the sales tax collection office through the school board that they had accumulated some money and had decided to pay a dividend to all of the people that were collecting sales tax. So we appreciate that. I want to bring to the council's attention a couple of other things in your packet there under Mayor's report. And Lacey has brought this to my attention, is the city of Hammond and Zemurray Park is highlighted in a rotating photo stream on the state's website. You may recall that we did get a $250,000 grant from the Land and Water Conservation Fund, Phase One of Zemurray Park, and we are now being featured on that website. There is one other item that I want to mention, continuing on, that the city of Hammond has received a grant for $150,000 for the Career Pathways Program. Charles, would you like to tell us about that? I'll give you an opportunity to come up. I didn't tell you that I was going to call on you for this, but since you put this program together, I thought that it would be most appropriate if you give us the report.
Absolutely. This is one through the Delta Regional Authority. They're an organization that represents several states along the Mississippi River Delta and this money was explicitly for the purposes of workforce development. We put an application together, we being the city of Hammond, the Hammond Area Economic Industrial Development District, the Tangipahoe Economic Development Foundation. We had representatives from North Shore Technical Community College, Tangi Connect, Hammond High Magnet School. We put together a proposal for a pilot, a $50,000 pilot. We were awarded that funding and invited to expand the program and accept the award of $150,000, which is very unusual. Typically, you don't get access to accept more money than you applied for, particularly three times as much. So we're very excited. I met with the mayor and our director administration last week and also with our partners. We had some additional individuals from North Shore Technical Community College, which has campuses in Washington Parish and St. Helena Parish. And so we're moving forward on that. There was a conference call this morning hosted by the DRA which made announcement. There was some press that was involved. We were one of 12 recipients of these funds and the maximum that you could receive was $150,000. So we're very excited. The Career Pathways Program will basically target juniors and seniors at the high school level who aren't necessarily bound for a four-year college degree program but who want to go to work. It will pair them with soft skills training, with technical skills training through the community college. And we have a number of businesses that have already kind of signed on to apprentice and intern those students and hopefully employ them when they are completing the program.
Good work.
Thank you.
Ask a couple of questions if you don't mind?
Certainly.
So, Charles, a good job on that. So are the kids coming from Hammond High only?
That's a good question. The pilot program will focus on Hammond High students because we already, we already have that program sort of set up. Dr. Beth Molds, who is the interim principal there, committed to creating this Career Pathways course at the high school regardless if the funding came through or not. So she's already got an instructor who will start teaching that course this coming spring semester. What we're planning on doing is piloting at the high school level and then probably during the summer and the fall, doing some outreach, some marketing and inviting students from other cities within Tangipahoe as well as from outside. The Magnet School can actually enroll students from outside the parish, which I was not aware of. And then the other part of it would be, we'll be talking with the community college, through the community college reaching out to high schools that they're already working with to potentially replicate the Career Pathways course at those high schools in other parishes. That's the entry point. Once the student graduates from that course, then they go into a dual enrollment component where they would be dual enrolled at their high school and at the community college, either here in Hammond or Bogalusa or Greensburg.
Just one last question. How would we know which kids are going to be in the program? Would we know, let's say if I had an interest in knowing the kids that are actually going to be selected to be in the pilot of the program, is that information going to be available?
What we're doing with the pilot is we're relying on the administration and teachers at Hammond High Magnet School to identify the students. We're hoping to target lower GPA students, students who maybe have financial difficulties and will not be able to attend a four-year college, but again, have that strong work ethic and want to go to work after high school. We'll be focusing on our industries here in Tangipahoe and the surrounding parishes that are in highest demand for jobs, that would be welding, machine tools, electrical and HVAC. So a student who is interested in going into a career in one of those fields, who has been identified by the school as being, you know, someone with a strong work ethic, who may be a lower GPA student or doesn't have an ACT score or who may be financially distressed in some way, that would be the initial target. As we expand, those types of students may change somewhat to fit the demographics of the different schools and parishes.
So it wouldn't be inappropriate for us to contact Beth Molds and just to find out who those kids are?
I don't think so. If you want to contact her directly, if you want to relay that to me.
Well, I just called. That's fine. Thanks.
Any other questions? Thank you for your time.
Good job, Charles.
Thank you.
Mr. President, if I could just end by saying, you know, it has been an honor to serve the citizens of the city of Hammond over the past 12 years. I think we've made a lot of progress and I appreciate all of the support that I've received from this council and every other council, Tony, that has been seated at this table. So I say thank you very much for that support and I encourage you, if you would, to please support the new mayor and the new administration as they come in and I will treasure this and I'll have it in a place of honor. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Oh, by the way, please try to come to the Heritage Museum. One of the reasons that we set it for that time is so everyone would have a chance to visit the museum because I know there are a lot of people that say they know where the museum is but have never been there and it'll be a great opportunity to come out and see actually what's at the Heritage Museum. It's a great place to visit. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, yes. And I'll backtrack just a little bit and also I want to thank the council for the support that they have given me and also I want to thank our clerk, Whitney. Excellent job in helping me do my job. So it's been good. I've learned a lot and looking forward to continuing to be a public servant in many different areas and very optimistic where we're heading and just wish you well in the years to come and come from there. Okay, approval minutes.
Motion to approve minutes, December 2nd, 2014. Second.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Bobby Martin.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Old business, none, new business. Want aid. A resolution to approve change order number one for Pioneer Forest Sewer Rehabilitation, city project number 616-31407, contingent on approval from State Facility Planning and Control. Chuck.
You should have a copy of the change orders, relatively lengthy in looks. As you know, we have a grant match of 250 and 150 or something like that at Pine Hill from the State Facility Planning Capital Outlay Grant. And we initiated some rehabilitation, some new sewer work in Pine Hill subdivision of their sewers and need disrepair. We need a lot of attention. It was a privately owned system. After we pretty much completed the laying of the new sewer from Brenda Street south to the pump station we had next to Wind Dixie, we started our rehabilitation work and our rehabilitation work encountered a lot of problems. Primarily, they could not, the crews that put their equipment into the lines to clean and TV, so the first thing we did is clean and TV the lines so we can inspect them, could not successfully clean and TV the lines without having problems with the adjoining residences, a number, say four or five, where the toilets backed up and so forth. And they lowered the pressure on their equipment so they wouldn't have problems in these adjacent residences. Well, then they couldn't get the camera through the line. So I suspended that operation. I really didn't know where to go next and we made a decision, sewer superintendent, the administration, myself got together and discussed our options and we think our best option would be to forego rehabilitation, look at other possibilities to get them to proper sewer. That's in the works. We don't have anything finalized yet because their course is a private system there that we have to deal with. So in the interim period, the pump station that we're tied into, which we call Pump Station 39 or the Wind Dixie Lift Station, is in very poor condition. It's about 24 years old. It has never been rehabilitated. It's on the books to be rehabilitated, but it's not been done. That station encountered, it's really, really gone downhill since about July or August. And the last couple of months, Gary Knight has told me on every occasion he could find me that we got to get that pump station fixed. So we've shifted gears somewhat and we're going to concentrate on getting that pump station upgraded so when all that sewer is tied in, it won't be a problem for the city. Because it's not just a current problem, it's every day, all day, eight hours a day they're out there trying to keep that thing running. He said it's running them in the ground. We have 51 pump stations. We don't need to have our manpower concentrated there. And that's the very nature of our 616 sewer funds, is to take care of those problems. So what's occurring in this, I'm making a long story, but I want to make it clear. This particular change order is relatively lengthy because all the top line items, you see probably the first 15 or so, are all rehabilitation dollars we currently have under contract. Adds up to right around $100,000. That we're recommending to delete and to substitute in, and that's the next line, the installation of the new pump station. So we'll basically come up with about a $12,396 credit. Now, this is a contract that's subject to approval Facility Planning, so your approval of the change order will be based on that concurrence by Facility Planning and Control, Mark Gates, I assume, if he's still doing this. And we obviously won't do this until we get the approval from the state. However, it is still going to help the system, it's going to help the people and hopefully in the next couple of weeks, we will have some more definitive plans on what are we going to do about the remaining customers. Because of the customers that are impacted, there's about 81 that we're not touching and there's about 15 or 20 in what we call a new system, a Sal Nicolosi system, let's call it. Those will be the ones that will be impacted immediately. And the remaining customers, we intend to deal with, we just don't know at this moment exactly what that'll be. So have I been adequately vague?
Mr. President, that's a good question. So when you said impacted, you were saying positively impacted because?
Right.
Those 15 are going to go on the system?
The new system.
Through the Wind Dixie pump station. Then the other 81 homes will stay on the existing system?
Until we can decide how we're going to accommodate them. Either through a rehabilitation project, which will involve consummating the sale of purchase of the system from the existing utility owners or from laying a similar system. Since it's a non-exclusive franchise, we do have the right to lay another system in there right alongside the existing system and serve all the customers. They of course have the option of taking or leaving it, but we'll run in there and there'll be a sewer available. That's sort of the plan. There's some hoops to jump through, obviously, as you can imagine if you think about it for a second. And we're not through all those hoops, but that's the plan. So I'm not, we're not leaving them on a limb.
I would just emphasize too that I've personally been on those blocks and talked to those people. So they are aware of this project. We have talked to them about multiple phases with this.
Lacey went door to door. Thank you. Take your hat off to her for doing that because we're going to need additional right-of-way. The streets are only 40-foot right-of-ways. And of course, city standards are 60-foot minimum, but when we adopted this subdivision as city limits, as we've done with any other subdivision that's come in that was not subject to city review, we take in the right-of-ways that were approved by the parish council way back when. So that happens to be a 40-foot right-of-way subdivision, not enough for the lady's sewer lines. And that was the nature of her solicitation, was go in there and say, would you be in agreement? It's all, it was non-binding and it was simply a verbal thing. We're going to have to consummate that. The city attorney will be involved, of course. And with that all, there's a little bit, few hoops to jump, but we do believe we're on the right track and we do believe when the dust settles, they'll have a brand-new sewer system and they will not have any more problems.
And either way, we're going to have to fix the lift station at the Wind Dixie.
That's correct.
We might as well get that done now so we'll be ready.
So I don't know, if you know anything about what was going on in Pine Hill, I think my explanation is clear. If you don't, you probably don't have a clue what I just said because I'm not sure what I just said.
It's clear sewer.
Anyway, I recommend approval of change order number one in the net amount of $12,396 credit to the original contract, reducing the original contract by $12,396.
Are there any questions from the audience?
Motion to approve.
Johnny Blunt?
Go ahead. Go ahead. Question? I just want to thank the city of Hammond and appreciation for what y'all are trying to do. It's been a major problem in that area for years since Wind Dixie took over and we appreciate all the complimenting, helping and chucking the mayor, you know, getting all this appropriated. We thank y'all.
Give us your name and address, sir, so we just have it for the record.
He's the mayor of Pine Hill Forest.
Name and address, sir?
Yes.
Put your name and address, sir. Sal Nicolosi?
We had to get that for the record, Mr. Sal.
101, Amory Drive, Amory Road.
Thank you.
Would you recommend approval of the change order?
We have, I think we have one.
Do you have a motion?
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Bobby Martin.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number two, a resolution to approve the appointment of Sam Di Vittorio to the Hammond Housing Authority for a five-year term ending December 31st, 2019. Mayor Foster.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. We do have an opening that has come available on the Hammond Housing Authority. In my thought process, I wanted to try to find someone that is involved in the real estate business because no one on the authority right now is in the real estate business. So I thought of Sam Di Vittorio. He was recently a candidate for office, which shows his interest in the city of Hammond. He lives in the city of Hammond and he is here tonight if there are any questions. But I would like to officially ask for confirmation of Sam Di Vittorio to the Hammond Housing Authority.
Okay. Today, around 4:30 or so, I received a phone call from this Dorothy?
Dolores.
Doris.
Who?
Doris Di...
Dolores.
...of the Hammond Housing Authority. And she said there was some situation that requires more time for the...
Did she say what those situations were, Mr. President? My question is, is why would, why would the executive director of the Hammond Housing Authority who is, she serves directly under the appointments of the board, why would she say that it needs more time? She has no say-so as to the appointments to this board.
Well...
What, did she say what her, what her feelings were? Why?
Well, it's not that she's against the appointment.
Why would she ask for, why would she, why would, why would Dolores, why would she be a person who would even consider asking this council to postpone this appointment? That's what I don't understand. Did she give you a reason? She said that there were some... He was recently a candidate for office, which shows his interest in the city of Hammond. He lives in the city of Hammond, and he is here tonight, if there are any questions. But I would like to officially ask for confirmation of Sam DiVittorio to the Hammond Housing Authority.
Okay. Today, around 4:30 or so, I received a phone call from Dolores.
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 Who?
Dolores.
Dolores of the Hammond Housing Authority.
And she said there's some situation that requires more time for the appointment.
Did she say what those situations were, Mr. President? My question is, is why would, why would the executive director of the Hammond Housing Authority, who is, she serves directly under the appointments of the board, why would she say that it needs more time? She has no say-so as to the appointments to this board.
Well.
What, did she say what her, what her feelings were? Why?
Well, it's not that she's against the appointment.
Why would she ask for, why would she, why would, why would Dolores, why would she be a person who would even consider asking this council to postpone this appointment? That's what I don't understand. Does she give you a reason? She said that there was something that came up? Does it concern the appointment, Mr. DiVittorio?
There's something that came up that requires further information.
From whom?
That everything is.
She has nothing to do with this appointment. I just don't understand that.
I got a phone call, too.
From her?
No. One we disappointed a few months ago. Eden.
From Eva Felder?
About the same thing. That's all she came by and said, about time. And we didn't do it.
I stand by my appointment.
Mr. President, I don't think it's appropriate for a director of an organization that has a commission that supervises a member to have any input in who their commissioners are, first of all. And I don't think the fellow commissioners have any right to pick who their fellow commissioners are either. I don't think that's appropriate. There's a structure in place where appointments are made by the mayor and ratified by the council. It has nothing to do with the executive director or the fellow commissioners to make that appointment. In fact, that's a clear violation or conflict of interest, in my opinion. Can't, executive directors can't pick their commissioner.
And I agree with that. That may be a violation of HUD regulations. Well.
Well, I'm not knowledgeable about the rules and everything on that matter. All I know is just what was shared with me.
With all due respect, she should've come tonight to speak publicly, if that's how she felt.
Like I said, there was nothing that indicated that she was not in favor, favor of Mr. Sam, so.
Mr. President, I think we had some more, like talk room, but you come up there.
My name is Janice Beard. I live at 806 Natchez Street, Hammond, Louisiana. And I went and talked to Ms. Tillman, who you're talking about, the director of Housing Authority, who's been on that, working with the Housing Authority for the last 26 years. I have some questions about the selection of a board of directors impacted success or failure of an organization. And I would like to know, what is his social capital? What is his experience and knowledge being in real estate, which this is Housing Authority? Would that not be maybe a conflict of interest? Would he be able to be acting good faith in the organization's mission? And will he be able to recuse himself if there was something that came up that might, from an opportunity that might be, become available to that organization? That might be a conflict of interest, him being in real estate and this being Housing Authority? I mean, Housing Authority usually is public housing, and sometimes we do have, with the voucher programs, we do have real estate that is owned by personal people. And would there be a conflict of interest with the type of job that he's in?
Mr. Vittorio, can you come up, please?
How y'all doing? Okay. All right.
Do you own any, any real estate that would fall under the Housing Board right now?
I mean, we have some, my brother has a couple houses that he owns that are rentals. I am in real estate, but I am a real estate agent, so I have different ethics that I have to go by as being a real estate agent, codes and everything else that I, you know, have to act responsibly and, and I'm not going to jail for anything.
So if there was a situation where your property, your brother's property, that would fall under government assistance?
Yeah.
You would have to abstain from that vote? Is that correct, Andre? Would that be an assumption?
Yeah, I mean, I would certainly not be able to participate in those things. I'd have to research more clearly the Housing Authority and what opportunities are there, but I would think there'd be no question that he couldn't place himself in a conflict and vote on any matters where he had any personal interest or monetary interest.
Yeah, absolutely. Any other questions?
Do you own any rental properties that's under the Housing?
Some do and some are. Some are, it's, it's, some are, some are. I rent to either. I don't, I don't discriminate against anybody. If somebody comes up to me and wants to rent a house and my brother owns it or I may have interest in it, obviously, I'm not gonna say, no, you can't rent here because you have housing. So I do take housing vouchers if they do, but not all.
That's one of the areas that's trying to clarify to you on.
Absolutely.
Whether or not that would qualify your nomination.
Yeah. So I mean, I do, you know, have that, but I mean, as far as, is it particularly, do I have to have that? No. But I do, you know, if anybody comes up to me, I'm not gonna discriminate on that as far as housing or not.
Question is, would it disqualify him? I mean, we, in eight years, I don't think we've ever questioned an appointee whether or not he had a potential conflict or how he would vote on a situation that may have a conflict. So I mean, I think we're questioning ethics before.
Well, it wouldn't be beyond just conflicts, it's that his property could not be eligible for the program. That, to me, would be the issue. And I think that's within the members' purview to say he's just not gonna make his property.
Absolutely. As far as of now, yeah, if there were some change that I could not be affiliated with anymore, that's not gonna make or break me as far as I have to have section eight or housing. If I had to step away from that, that's, you know, not, not a big deal. I mean, I wasn't in, I didn't, I wasn't fortunate enough to have this, you know, this, you know, appointment, possibility of appointment here before, whenever I was involved in real estate. So therefore, if there was something I was not able to be a part of, why I am serving as a member of the Board of Housing, obviously, I wouldn't do both. It's, you know, and it wouldn't be an issue.
It wouldn't be a perception of possibility of conflict or government action or investigation if somebody decided to say, well, if one of these properties came up and somebody had an issue with it, and then they decided to take it further, we don't wanna have anything going where we will be perceived to be in non-compliance of state, federal, or local laws. Is that correct?
All local laws or any, any regulation that are involved with this appointed position, if I were a part of something beforehand, I would step down. And if there were something from here on out I would not be a part of, anything that would, that would conflict any interest of my appointment, if I was appointed. Absolutely not.
And that also entails non-public information that might come through Housing Authority that could impact your career choice and maybe, I'm looking at perception of, and how things look. And being in real estate, seems to be, to me, in a complete conflict of interest. When I spoke to Ms. Tillman, she was telling me that what she really needed was, at one time, she had a CPA that was on her board. And I see where that would be able, where a CPA would be better able to help her extend her resources for the services that she provide in this area.
Well, I also know there's a need in that housing for being experienced in real estate, that there's also a high demand of those tenants that need vouchers, need places to stay, that don't have places to stay because they have problems finding different landlords, finding different houses out there that they just can't find them. There are more, more tenants looking for places that are, meet up to standards and codes, that people take care of their properties enough to get, you know, tenants in there. So there are always a search for it. I do that for a living. I know, you know, people who have houses that would like a tenant, I'll be able to help them to find a place to live that meets up to all the standards and criteria that the Hammond Housing needs to meet their criteria to pass inspections.
But that would also mean that.
Mr. President, can I, can I speak, please? In the eight years, in the eight years that I've sat on this board, I've never seen a nomination for an appointment be interrogated the way that he is. There's a Board of Ethics in Baton Rouge that I'm sure, if Mr. DiVittorio varied from the job that he was tasked at hand to do, that I think the Board of Ethics would be, would step in and take care of the situation if he did something wrong. But I, I just don't agree with the way that we're interrogating this man over a possible perception of something. So obviously, the board has the, they can make up their own mind, each individual can make up their own mind, but this is going on.
Just make your point.
Well, just like he just said, with him, to me, that's still a conflict of interest. His position, bringing in something that, according to, I think, her bylaws, it says, and he said he had a brother with property, then these things could, there's too much information that's going around in that, in that circle. And him saying, okay, well, I can bring in realtors and properties that might be used in this situation.
Everything would be legally done, everything would be ethically done. I mean, as a real estate agent, I know personal information about a lot of individuals that I cannot go out and publicly speak about. It's different ethics, different classes I take. You can go, you can go check any of my ethical background in real estate and check to see if I've ever brought up any kind of ethical.
Yeah, but you've also never been in a position.
Mr. President, can I make a comment? And I think we're, you know, I had a chance to talk to Dolores as well, and as a matter of fact, she called me today at about 4:15. And one of her concerns, rightfully so, was that, that as she spoke to her, I guess, regional level people, that in their bylaws, it does state, according to her, and you can verify this, that, that an appointment of a person in a situation that Mr. DiVittorio's and could potentially lead to a conflict of interest, and she would like to have enough time to review that. I think that there's really no rush in this case to make a decision, and we don't have to, we don't, you know, it's not like, I don't think she's in a desperate need of a board member tomorrow. And I would imagine if we, if we found, had more time to review and make a good, solid decision, that would, so that we don't have to go to Ethics Board and those type things, it would make more sense. So, you know, if it's appropriate, I would just move that we table the appointment until further notice, until maybe we can do that at the meeting in July, I mean, June, I mean, I'm sorry, January 20th, which would give us enough time, we'll have the new mayor in place at that point. If Pennington decides that's what he wants to do, and we do the research, and that's still his decision, then he'll have the right to do that. So my recommendation would be that, I would move that we, that we table this resolution number two for the appointment of Sam DiVittorio to the Hammond Housing Authority for the five-year term and to, and bring that discussion back up at the January 20th meeting.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Bobby Martin.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
No.
Motion passes to table.
Thank you for your consideration.
All right. Thank y'all. Thank you for considering.
Number three, a resolution, one, approving the submission of an application for $15,750 under the Local Government Assistance Program to install a new roof at Hammond's Police Department, Police Station. Two, agreeing to a cash match-up to $117,011. And three, authorizing the mayor to sign all grant-related documents. Charles.
Good evening again. Just to put this in the context, we've had a couple of leaks over at the new police station. The roof is about 30 years old. What we're trying to do here is be proactive. These funds can only be used for infrastructure and capital improvement. The match will be coming from Grant Match and from the Police Department. We think this will be a good approach to resolving future problems with the roof.
Second.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Bobby Martin.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number four, a resolution, one, authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract on behalf of the city of Hammond with the Division of Administration of the State of Louisiana in the amount of $1 million to convert an oxidation ditch for pretreatment at the city's wastewater treatment plant. Two, agreeing to match these grant funds with $333,540. And three, authorizing Whitney Statham, City Council Clerk, to certify the signatures on the authorized signature card.
So this is the one that the mayor announced at the last council meeting, the $1 million grant? What we're looking for here is, basically, we're introducing a resolution to approve or accept the grant award. The match is not new match dollars, these are monies that were previously obligated.
Motion to approve.
Charles, I do have one question. Excuse me. You know, we are in a transition and we're authorizing the mayor. Is this the new mayor or the old mayor, or which mayor, or can any mayor?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna take this one, because I already asked Carol Newton this very question.
Oh, okay.
Carol Newton is the program manager for LCVG, and she said that the outgoing mayor, since we are approving this tonight, can go ahead and sign the contract. But what we're gonna do is wait to do the signature cards until January 2nd, so that the new mayor, who will need to have all the signature authority going forward, will sign those cards.
And who's the new mayor?
The new mayor is Pete Pennington.
Thanks. Thanks for inviting me.
Okay. I was just, just wanted to be sure we didn't get caught in the timing differences that we have here. Thank you. Thank you.
There's a motion on the table. Motion on the table.
Second.
Well, you made the motion.
Somebody else has to say it.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Bobby Martin.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number five.
Thank you, Charles.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a market and vendor agreement with the City Court of Hammond for the renovation of the Leon Ford 3 Memorial Justice Building.
This is a contract that we have established with the Hammond City Court. As you know, our Police Department has moved out of the Leon Ford Criminal Justice Building down to our new police station. And so all of that first floor is going to be taken over and renovated by the City Court. So this is a very simple agreement. It just says that, basically, we're gonna work together on the scope of work. They're defining the exact elements because they are going to pay for it all. So this is just an agreement establishing those parameters. And if you have any additional questions, I'm going to refer them to Guy Ricotta, who is the clerk of court.
Motion to approve. Second.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Bobby Martin.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Final adoption of ordinance, old business, none. Are there any new business in town?
We don't, sir.
Seeing none. On a new business, number one, final adoption of an ordinance to declare the following vehicles as surplus property. You can see them in your agenda?
Johnny Blunt.
Excuse me, could I stop you? And can we also please indicate that they may be transferred to Southeastern Louisiana University? I apologize for interrupting, but I need to be sure, please, that that gets in the records.
Right. Further obtain that the vehicles may be transferred to Southeastern Louisiana University for their use under the mutual aid agreement between Southeastern Louisiana University Police Department and the Hammond Police Department.
Thank you.
So we already have a motion, a second. We just need a minute.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Bobby Martin.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Motion for adjournment?